I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the bills.
We have a motion to approve.
We have a second. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills. Any questions on the bills? Anything on the ordinary in the bills, Kenny?
At least he was a little high.
Number one.
Yeah. Well, you know, some of the stuff, some of the stuff was from December, so I don't know if they didn't get it in January's. I don't know.
About a year or two?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we had twelve hundred and eleven days, that seems like it's higher than usually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's what I'm putting out there.
I don't know. You got a bill?
No, that's all right.
Just, just, it'll just look higher.
It's just gonna go up. Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions on the bills?
We have a motion to approve the bills.
Second. And we have a second for the discussion. Seeing none, walk off please.
Britt?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Lightman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the financial reports.
Move it through. Can we, can we get a beer?
Couldn't be after a question.
No.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
It's all good.
Okay, so far?
No.
Second.
And we have a second. Further discussion. Seeing none, walk off please.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The federals' checks. We approve, we have a motion to approve the federals' checks.
Second.
And we have a second. Discussion or questions on the federals' checks. Seeing none, walk off please.
Wilson?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the agenda, does anybody have anything to add? Okay, I got a motion to approve the agenda. Any additions?
Let me approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries and the agenda is approved. I should make note where we approve, we're just gonna skip down to unfinished business because Kerry has to be up to court.
Yeah, but I don't want to leave Kerry in the top three.
Okay. Well, Bill's here, we'll let GoGo first. Right on time.
Morning.
We're making quick work of it here.
Yeah. We have a lot of professional development opportunities coming up during the next while to approve Brendan and I. I will be gone the end of February into the first full week of March, I won't be here at that meeting, but put Brendan on the agenda for her to come and visit with you. Round up this year, I haven't been here since, so round up this year was, first day was really well attended, second day was about half. That's kind of odd because fifty degree plumbers with pickups couldn't make it to the meetings or apple dogs. I would like to thank Commissioner Liphon for helping us clean up that day, that was very, very helpful. About in the seat, two Sundays ago, we had our shooting sports banquet, Commissioner Olson and Britt were there, very well attended, that was, it turned out to be a very good night, we sponsored, well sponsored for kids for t-shirts and bank volunteers and all those that were there, so we had about two hundred or ten back. I rounded up, we had about three fifty the first day, about two hundred or two ten the second day, which was quite different for us. Cropping wise, I'm sure everybody's still in the limo, winter appliance, because windows and markets, I see they windowed not good yesterday again. Winter appliance this year will be interesting. I'm assuming less corn, more wheat, but don't know that. Questions, comments? Alright, thank you.
Thanks Bill.
Thanks Bill.
Oh, you got plenty of time, let's keep moving then. Good morning. I just have a couple things I've said on your desk to review in the next couple months. The first one is we did receive the agricultural value per acre assessment from the state for 2018. And a notice that for Ramsey County, and it looks like all of the counties, it did increase again. Our last year's value was six oh five twenty-three. And now to be at a hundred percent, it would be six sixty oh one. And that brings us in at around ninety-one, a little over, ninety-one point seven percent approximately, rounding. So in June at our tax equalization meeting, I will ask you to set if we want to increase for the next year or not. It has been typical that we've stayed around ninety-five percent, the state gives us a ten percent allowance. Ninety-five is where we try to keep the residential and everything at for the safe side. But other than that, do you have questions in regard to that or discussion?
And ninety-five would be that six twenty-seven number you have listed, correct?
Yes, yeah, I, yes, exactly. So if you look, I think I had three percent, tonight, I'm not sure what I put exactly on yours, I have a little more on mine, but three percent is around a six twenty-three. I think I, I figured it out very quickly last night, I had a three percent increase, just using North Creole for an example. With this year's mills, it's like nineteen cents increase per acre. What you've been said.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's assuming the same mill rate.
Right, exactly, I mean, that's just growing up.
Raise the value of the land, but drop the mill rate accordingly.
Yeah.
That all depends on how the budget goes.
Right, so yeah, that's clearly up to somebody besides me. So that is that, and then the other thing I brought along was, I know I spoke previously to you about just looking into the possibility of maybe doing a commercial reevaluation for Ramsey County, in the county. Currently, we use a kind of system, it's called Bandar Appraisals. The city of Dulce Lake uses it for residential and commercial, they have everything in. The county has a residential in, but we've never had our commercial in. So everything else in the county besides our commercial is being valued through that system somehow and is in. So it's something to look at. They work throughout the states around here, but also in North Dakota, they've been here very, a lot in different counties doing these. They send a contract of what a sample contract is, what we could sign if it met our standards, if we weren't interested in doing it. And also, I know you had asked how we would notify people of this, and this is a typical letter that they send, just with our information on it, on how the procedure goes on for people. And that's just a review, I, I just received the contract yesterday, so I haven't gone in depth with it, but I think it's hopefully pretty standard and kind of what we've talked about before.
You're thinking about starting first, do you, or is that on the air?
What they would do is actually, this would not be for values for 2020, they're, they're out that far, but they would come next year and do the doy and elevator on their way through, and then they would come back and in 2019 and do everything else. But it would be able, they would be able to come and do that elevator that comes off its exemption in time for it.
Yeah, I believe I asked you when we were visiting the other day, how many commercial properties would this affect?
If you look in the contract, it kind of, it's, it varies a little bit because we are still able to combine some parcels to lower the number and that. But it was about, for improved parcels, improved parcels, it's about a hundred ninety-five.
I remember you said somewhere around that.
Yeah.
One hundred ninety-five per parcel.
Yeah.
But not the city?
Not the city.
So that's eighty-eight thousand seven twenty-five as far as your contract.
And then they have a, there's ten parcels that were unimproved, just vacant land, that if it's in the middle of a developed area, you wanted to value that land also. You know, the example would be near the highway two, you know, there might be some lots that have been developed, but there's commercial on two sides of them.
That's the valuation in the middle would hypothetically roll off.
Right.
What would the money have been?
It's four hundred and fifty-five dollars per commercial parcel and then twenty-five dollars per vacant commercial lot.
And it comes to eighty-eight thousand seven twenty-five.
And that four hundred and fifty-five would cover everything from a large commercial property to a small, so it's one price.
Have you visited with any commercial property owner or developer that, and you got a feeling of what they think?
Not in particular, I'm, you know, I know that our value, you know, some of the sale prices that have been coming in versus what we have on them have been staggered, because, you know, on the highway two.
Higher than what we had the value of, like considerably?
A bit, on some. And then there's properties that haven't sold, you know, or we don't have any comparables to, you know, with the resort, Marine has things like that, we have to.
We haven't had nothing comparable.
Really, I mean, of that nature in the county.
Has nobody compared us up to what Jameson or?
And that's what they do, they do work, you know, with, yeah, I think they do, they have a listing of everything.
They have all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, Beth and I were talking about it the other day, I said, I wouldn't even know where you start valuing something like that.
Yeah, you've got to have a terrible sale.
Because it's obviously, yeah, it's obviously not worth what you spent to build it. You know, more than likely, it's not particularly one-to-one, so I, that's, it would be difficult to even start valuing something like that.
It's just like farmland, you know, from one section to the next, it would be a huge difference, you know?
Couple miles can make a big, big difference. Yeah, so I would assume they have to have some type of comp values for elevators and things like that.
Yeah, you'd have to have somebody with a lot of knowledge, you know, in this business, that's for sure, so.
Now, that we've explained before too, there's a fine line between personal property and real property in the commercial, you know, a crane is real property possibly, if it's attached to the building. In some buildings, it's not valued, and it's hard to know for sure unless you're an expert in each different type of commercial property.
So is Bandar the only company that does these, or are there other companies, or just most, since we work with Bandar, that's who you?
Right, and they've been, they're very, most counties have them now, I have a map in the office of how many are using them. So they're very familiar with. Another thing is if you use it outside the company, they wouldn't put it in our software, and we would, and so.
You would make merger and everything far more difficult.
Yeah, so what you'd say if we end up probably having Bandar come and do something else to help us.
Well, I guess for reference, like for when we're doing highway appraisals for redway, those vary, they were from, you know, two thousand to thirty-five hundred dollars, I mean, this would seem like it's pretty reasonable.
So are you just giving us this for information now, or do we need action for you to go do, sign the contract?
We don't need immediate action, but I would say within the next couple months, it would be nice, if we're planning on doing it, we would want to get on the way, on the list so that they know to schedule us in.
We have to allocate other technical expenses.
Well, we would just, they don't, we don't, they don't, they don't get paid until, until they do, start doing the work, so, yeah, we could just budget from July onward.
Right, we'll be budgeting the next two years.
Yeah, and it would be, all the work would be done in nineteen, I mean, for?
Correct.
No, nineteen.
Nineteen.
I was checking where we're at, you're saying?
Oh, it's a couple of years.
Tens to half.
Yeah, we probably want money upfront though.
I think in the contract, I think when they start, there's some in nineteen, because I just got it last night, it was supposed to be mailed and then it didn't come, so I don't know, do you mail it for us?
See, does it all pay anything?
Ten percent.
Ten percent? Okay. Yeah, I'm sure you could find that in the document or something.
Did you have a timeline on how long it would take, Beth?
I thought you said all time.
To do this?
For them to do the project?
They'll do all the work in nineteen, and we'll put the values on in twenty. So the summer, you know, a couple of months or something like that.
If you look at the last page, it's got a pretty good break open on it, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Like they'll start actually doing work next February, getting stuff put together, and then they'll go over the field in June, be done at that by November, and then merger will be in December then. So it looks like a, they've done this before.
Very, yes, and they will attend an informal meeting with anyone, they notify of changes, I'm going to speak with them.
I let it run, we, we hold ten percent until the all-star work is complete. And then they will send monthly billing showing the amount due for that period.
Where's this at?
Page fourteen.
Oh, read them, I'm asking. Well, that's why I don't have the page fourteen.
So I bought my, I bought with Mark, so.
Is that in the aspect fourteen? Well, maybe it's on the next sentence, isn't it? Okay, yeah, so there's basically no money down, it's just, it's bills monthly, then when the work starts. I guess what are, what are the wishes of the commission, do we want to wait a little while?
Yeah, they, they've looked for a while.
Give Kerry a time to look at the contract, make sure it's all on the up and up.
Beth will keep us informed and
Okay.
I don't even need you done, I guess.
Okay, any other comments on that?
Beth, will you email me that?
Yep, I will.
Do you have a motion to table?
Uh, yeah, because we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna move it to unfinished business, just like anything else, we probably should.
So.
We have a motion to table the contract for commercial property reappraisal, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Okay, anything else, Beth?
No, that is it.
Fantastic, thank you. How long is it gonna take, Kevin?
A long time.
Huh?
It took a while.
Okay, well, we'll carry that, plus Beth's still here to talk, so we can talk what kind of things to share.
So, my understanding is the county acquired the property through the tax forfeiture, and you know that there's a test to submit, and there's a prospective buyer who will buy the property for the cost of the taxes that doesn't, would like the county to come in and take care of it after the fact. Is that a good summation of kind of the issue? No?
I think it was, the city itself would like to see the home removed and is unable to do it financially and physically. And that was an idea that was brought up, that it could work that direction, possibly if that's allowable.
Well, in between the tax sales under fifty-seven twenty, pretty much the county is free to sell to whomever a government entity in a matter of public policy, Mr. McKee, and over the kind of regulations and expectations last time. It just seems to me that as a matter of precedence, if we do something like this, it just seems like it's a bad precedence to be setting. So I feel that the county should do the removal appropriately and then assess the cost to value the property. You know, and at some point, if you need to look at dropping it under fifty-seven twenty fifteen, the value after that, that's a problem. But I think it's a situation that we could do some actions beforehand, before we start taking property for the taxes, bringing nuisance actions, and I know that that maybe ultimately would result in nothing, but it's a better precedence, I mean, that's just my feeling of the whole issue.
We've got some legal standing to do with that, other than just kind of?
Yes, and so as the properties come up, that the county is considering taking, then we should be looking at and assessing if those costs are going to be something for a particular parcel and then move forward, go forward to the ownership under the tax forfeiture. Those are kind of my feelings on that, so.
I'm gonna ask one question, Kevin, now, the one that we toured out here in town, the lot, who's doing like the mowing and the upkeep, us still?
Well, we do it a couple times, but I think the neighbors do it more than we do.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, if, if we went through the same process and handed, and then it sat there, we're not gonna have to run up and mow it constantly or something to keep it looking decent for the city, or, you know, maybe we could come with, you know, just, that's one of the reasons that I don't want it to turn into essentially, we own it, it's a nuisance property for people that live next to it.
We've got a bunch of these properties throughout the county, and we don't mow hardly any of them.
Yeah, well, especially if the fumobials and stuff, not so much.
Fumobials are a good example.
Yeah, I mean, those are supposed to be.
Left for a while.
Basically. And, and, and we don't know for certain there is asbestos in the property, I mean, we might get lucky and there might not be any, but we'll still have to pay for an inspection if that's the way we're gonna go. Under, under that section, chapter fifty-eight, does it state how much, say we, we do the tear down, we do the, we do the check, everything's fine, we do the tear down, we assess it to the property, does it say how much we can move the property valuation down after, before that assessment on? I mean, are there legalities to how much you can move it every year or?
It's a little bit of a county out there, freezing if it governing body.
I assume it's just up to, the commission should be up there.
It is, it is, yes.
Tax director put a value on it.
Yes, yep.
Because I, I, I mean, part of our intent was, we don't want to give it away for nothing, but at the same time, if, if somebody up there can use it and give it to them, so they'll take care of it and, you know. It's kind of the same problem we have in town, you know, that I have a feeling we're not gonna be able to pull seventeen thousand dollars or whatever for that, to our town, so we're gonna have to re, move that valuation down next year to something we think maybe is reasonably priced for someone to come in and buy. So it doesn't do us any good sitting there.
No.
Kevin, what do you think now?
I think we'd be open in big town, I mean, there's a lot of these examples around the county that we probably don't even know about. So we could run into a lot of these if we start doing it. That's just my guess, I don't know.
Well, I think that there are gonna be more and more of them, you know, as time goes on.
There's abandoned homes everywhere, so eventually they could pay taxes on why they'll come to this.
Yeah, well, there's, yeah, there's abandoned homes in all of the small community, as you tell me, I mean, I delivered the census in twenty-ten, and I don't, I can't tell you how many abandoned homes I walked up to in these smaller towns. There's a lot of them, I mean, it's gonna be a problem at some point.
As soon as they become abandoned, they really start falling apart.
Oh, yeah, the minute you quit doing any kind of upkeep maintenance, even if it's just minimal, it turns into a mess for a quick.
We can't be the first county that's run into this issue, I wonder what.
Yeah, and I imagine that you get the processes in place at the beginning before you hook in taking over the properties to try and take some action at the front.
It's kind of interesting, now, the city of Starkweather takes care of theirs, they just buy it themselves, the city.
The city does, yeah. They got enough taxes, they're not doing that.
Interest on the backside here, why they do it, you know, they're not gonna be used, they don't want to sit there on possibly going to be used by somebody.
They got a fire department right down, so.
Take care of them.
They buy them for the taxes due, or?
Yeah, they've been here and bought them over time since I've been at the commission. And sometimes they're fifteen, twenty, fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars, you know.
Yeah, but some of these are toward on, they're coming to buy it for.
It's the city of Starkweather doing that. So I think they've got to be all cleaned up in down, don't they, Beth?
Yes, and Lawton has been really active in doing the same thing.
They've been pretty good, too.
Yeah, I think this house, in particular, is a larger home, and Hammond is just struggling with it. A lot of them are, this is a pretty big, two-story home.
I know we, it's too, too, too cold in some of you, you know, with the construction end of this, repairing it or something. But I wonder if we couldn't talk to the city of Starkweather and their fire department, they may help us out with hand, would they, Beth?
I have no idea, but I could ask.
I bet they would be interested, they're a pretty aggressive fire department.
Yeah. I don't want to volunteer to make a phone call, but I'll try, so. Might have a little connection with all the people on the city council. Maybe they'd be interested in helping with some of this, you know. They, you know, the county is overtaking all these projects.
It's spending.
It gets spent because our hands are tied up, certain things we have to do. Let me see what I can do, let's handle it for a while, see what it looks like in July or something, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we are sitting in January, we've got a few months to get, get our deduction, I'll figure out what we want to do with it.
What, like when we toured all the one in town, where, where does that funding come from, what is that fund?
Emergency fund?
Well, I think, yes.
Because I know there's a specific fund, I just can't remember which one it comes from.
Where's it? Say one of the crazy school.
Now, now, in that case, though, the fire chief came to us and said, this, yeah, so that was kind of an emergency, if you know what I'm saying.
I don't know if they had complaints. I don't know, like you said, you know, if there's complaints, we have to deal with it, but.
The foundation was falling in.
Right, but I mean, yeah, I know it was bad, but he kind of looked at me and like, well, I drive by that rental very often, so that's my wish, you don't know.
Well, the, yeah, and the difference is too, is that, you know, I don't think Cray School ever came back onto the tax rules, tested it.
No. Yes, we did.
Did it at some point in time, I mean, because that's usually when it becomes the problem, because once we have it, then we got liability issues and everything with the building sitting there, whereas a private property owner probably knows or just doesn't know, and doesn't care.
People bought it, I just had one or two years there, and then never seen it again, so I know I came back.
I didn't, I didn't.
You know, ninety dollars was better than that, cleaned up.
It was a big, it was a good sized building.
I guess, I don't know, how do you dance around that as a public identity, just selling it like that? I never agreed with that when the school was, you sold it, because they got thirty-two hundred dollars.
That's something after selling it, the one in Cray.
I would have to say.
Yeah, I was.
I thought that was, wow, how you dance on your obligations for thirty-two hundred dollars and suddenly pay you? And that's, that's not right. I mean, I don't know, it must have been legal.
One-way hall.
Well, it was an auction, it was an auction sale. It was an auction sale, it was just basically big, so I bid, I bid bought it.
Nobody bought it, yeah.
It's so different than selling a pickup at our auction, I bid bought it. You gave everybody a chance, advertised it.
Would you pay it?
No, I know, no, I know where you're coming from.
Who's gonna eat that thing? Was it a dream? Then hold back for taxes, they took, well, it took them five years, right?
What year did they tear it down? I'm curious, six, six, three.
Everyone came on, so what could you do on the tender?
It took a while, because the school closed in ninety-six.
They didn't have the sale right away.
No, it was a year probably after.
You're, I'd say I am here for quite a while.
Okay. So we have. What are the wishes of the commission on that table, and maybe make some more calls and try to figure out how to essentially dismantle it for the least cost possible? Within the parameters of the law.
I would make a motion to do that, but Kevin says, there's numerous other ones in the county that are probably end up having to deal with them sometime.
And I don't know if we necessarily get a motion, because it is unfinished business already. So we can just basically try and make some phone calls and figure out how to do it properly in the law, and try not to cost us a million dollar issue. Okay, is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Kerry, thank you, Beth. Kevin?
Alright.
Did we want to, did Terry have anything before we get to Kevin, before she has to?
I can just tell you that. I can just tell you that, um, I can tell you the final numbers came in, and, uh, I think we had two hundred and forty-some more criminal cases last year than the year prior.
What?
Thirty-five more felonies, thirty-five more felonies, the rest were misdemeanors.
How many cases were we at last year?
Uh, last year was about seven hundred and forty-two, I think somewhere around there, and the year prior was five hundred and twenty-six, somewhere around.
Hey, my quick math, that quick math tells me that's thirty-three percent.
Little busier. Little busier.
Is there some way we can chart out like the last five or ten years of caseload?
Yep, yep, I can get that from the court office.
Is that, and I think that that would be a pretty telling graph.
Um, it seems to me like, I know Walsh County was up, um, yeah, I'm trying to think about what other counties that they were up or not. Yeah, we're up, similar sized.
And, and I think we've discussed that with, with Lonnie in the past, too, that one of our concerns long-term is if we continue to have more workload, we don't wanna burn the staff out, you know.
Oh, and, um, my whole lot is about to be arrested, so, my baby, um.
What is it?
Come on, Karen, do. We have both channels back in our county, which is nice, because, um, we love flavor for each one, or maybe things different, so, yeah.
But you're busy.
We are.
Never seems to end, though.
Yeah, job security for sure.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, yeah, thanks for the waiting, yeah.
All right. Uh, first, on, on the K L J has submitted an amendment to the end of any contract where I think left over, like, right now. The first contract didn't have fourteen street or the terminal road on it, so they added the nine thousand eight fifty-eight thirty, and we just need a motion to assign a new contract for the chairman.
So, we have a motion in the second to sign a contract that is amended with the additional dollars.
Seeing none, all in favor of my saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So same side? Motion carries.
Now include the well mitigation monitoring for, for the previous projects, too.
Okay, and we weren't spending any money, we were just making contracts up. Okay.
Five-year road plan, um, I did send out the updated version. This, this isn't gonna take too long to review, does she wanna do it now, or set another date, or?
We got time now.
I just wrote, the first page of gravel projects, I just rotated the old project down to the bottom, and then updated the cost of the projects for two thousand eighteen. So that page, that first page of gravel is kinda, just rotating the project down.
Basically, we take two projects a year, every four years now?
Um.
Who we take?
Yeah, it kind of varies.
So is, is that, is that the total amount of projects we ever gravel, basically?
Usually, yeah.
Unless there may be something special real quick or something.
Right.
That's kind of the total of our roads in the county, right?
Yeah.
And that's for the county, yes. Yeah, those roads are responsible for that.
So, next page is our projects, our paving project. And again, we rotated the old one zone. We've got the, if you look at the bottom, we got the preliminary and the, there ain't done for Ramsey One and Walleye Military Roads, so that, to the bottom, and now this year we'll be doing the paving work. And I updated the estimates on that. And that estimate includes engineering and, um, construction both, and it's a full cost, there is some federal aid dollars that have been used, being used there, like five hundred thousand or give or take. And even not quite federal, four hundred and something, anyway, that's figured into that. And then in two thousand nineteen, if we follow our plan, we'll be doing the engineering for Ramsey Three up by Hamden. That's the only road left in the twenty-one years I've been here that hasn't been overlaid, so, in twenty-one years, actually, that's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
That's good, what, what's, what's the useful life of these thin, this thin leftover lays we've been putting on?
They say twenty years, but now with the approvals of the asphalt, it might be like twenty-five.
So basically, we're pretty good schedule here, then basically rolling every twenty years or so, trying to get an overlay on, and then in between, we'll probably, what, chip seal them three times, something like that, every five, six years?
Every six years, so, yeah, out there, forward, depending, yeah.
Okay.
And that oil money is what really got us caught back up again.
Right, yeah, I mean, that, there's, there's a few, and, and that's one of my long-term concerns, is, you know, we've spent, we've had a lot of oil money come to help us catch up. Long-term, or, or hopefully we don't fall behind again, but, I mean, that's the discussion for another day, but. There's a, there's, if, if, if the oil money isn't there fifty, ten, fifteen years now, but those tough decisions are gonna have to be made without even paying for it.
Another thing to keep in mind there is if any of us are still around, we did all those miles in a three-year period, well, they're all gonna need working at the same time, twenty years now. I don't know if one of us will be here, but that's the way it's gonna happen, they'll all need this work done at the same time again.
Well, pretty good deal, we have a plan.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I'm both gonna be around at a little bit, just around the general.
Shoot from the hip with EMS, um, you know.
So any questions on the paving projects? Actually, something I should've mentioned is that we have our traffic counts behind all those roads, gravel roads and paved roads, so if you're, for some reason, looking for what the traffic counts are on our roads, you can look at our five-year road plan, you see the, just keep in mind.
Another question they caused for those paving projects, too, is that most of those overlays were probably the last one we could fit on the existing grade, too.
Yeah.
So. In other words, we'll have to widen shoulders to make, as you keep going up, they get that wider and wider.
Yeah, so when we, when we do the next overlay, hypothetically, twenty years, excuse me, from now, then we're gonna have to do grade work, and it's gonna add to the cost.
Right. All right, next page is the chip seal, and we'll be chip sealing Ramsey County Two, a little piece of Elk's Drive, the Prairie Road, and the Wood Raton Road. One of our bigger years, twenty miles we're doing. And I think we're, I'm gonna plan on doing a fog seal again, hopefully we can do that every year, it seems to turn out a little nicer, a little more. And so far this year, looking at the snowplow, hasn't bothered any of the chips after doing that fog seal, too, so that's a big benefit.
Of keeping the place a little bit better?
Yeah, the plow isn't taking the chips off. So that's figured into that estimated cost, and the painting, the stripes is figured into that estimated cost. And again, we just rotate the old project down to the bottom. Any questions there?
Just one question, is there some culverts on those roads that we should definitely look at before we chip seal?
Um, I'll make sure of that, but I can't think of any, but.
Couple south of Curry, you should make a pass.
South of Curry?
Okay, see if they're intact yet, I don't know, I have my doubts, but.
That's where it kind of backs up into backing to town, doesn't it?
They've done a good job draining it, they really, they did a lot of ditching out there, rather set up to take the water out of town, so. But those two culverts south of town.
So, we could do a thin leftover layer, their paper patcher. Well, we'll look at the culvert steel, they're fairly new, so they should be, so.
Should be all right, it's dry in here and all of the.
Is it, I don't remember that, we'll look at it in spring then. Any questions on the chip seal? Okay, the last page is our bridges, so that, that changed a little bit from previous years. The first one is the Mars Township Bridge outside, prefab bridge that we're working on. Three hundred thousand includes the bridge, renting a crane, the engineering, the whole works, so. That should include all the cost. And then also there was the bridge that, in Cato, let's see, east of Eldon, Thorsten, or, the, some of the citizens, I can't think of their names, were concerned with, and the water board we looked at. So that's pretty new culverts in there, the price, thirty thousand. And then there's another bridge that's just off of there, a couple of miles, that's a bridge that we're not gonna take it out. That, uh, I'm not thinking the names, but a couple of the citizens were concerned about.
Martinsville, one or?
Yeah.
And, and Brentford.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, cause it's, it's too narrow to get across.
So those two bridges, or those three are scheduled for next year. And the rest of those have just been on the list forever, they're out in the Curry Trails, I don't even know if some of them get used for farming. But they are over twenty feet long, so they stay on the system.
So that's all we have left for bridges that are over twenty feet long, or how many?
No, we don't have hardly any left that are under twenty feet.
Oh, yeah, cause everything under, we basically turn the culverts down.
All right, yeah. Everything over twenty feet, it's inspected by the state every year, maybe there's.
Well, so this is everything that we have over twenty, but there's, we have a bunch, we have some still that are under twenty that might, we could do culvert with them.
I don't think we have any left that are under twenty, that that comes to mind, there are like one or two out there, but. These are ones that were, when we made this list, they were the ones that were the lowest ton rating. And some of them don't even have to have ton ratings, or rated high enough that, for instance, that third one in two thousand eighteen, is rated for forty tons, so it doesn't even need to be signed. Forty tons is the breakout point there. If they're forty tons or above, they don't need to be signed for ton ratings, so that's why some of those, uh, squares are blank there, so they're good enough to be rated for forty tons yet. But they're just some of the poorer, worse bridges, and, uh, we have in the county that as far as sufficiency ratings, and they are on Curry Trails, like grass, dirt trails, tube track trails.
Do we take a look at that one like every year, Kevin?
Yeah, we try to.
And then make sure they're.
Yeah, cause once in a while, the head water, the edges settle and we want to fill them in or whatever, so we try to get to every one of them. Sometimes you can't get to them for whatever reason.
That, that third one on the list, that over like Cato, that was rated forty tons when they last inspected it?
Yeah.
So is that still, it's in pretty good, somewhat okay shape then, if it rated forty? Is there, are there any other, and we're gonna do culverts on that one?
Yes.
Are there any other ones out there that are maybe rated poorer that need culvert work?
There's the two, you can see, was it twenty-five and the seventeen on it? Those are below the forty tons.
I mean, I guess it all comes down to what's traveled the most, I mean, cause you wanna quickly, but I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, if, if it still has decent sufficiency, maybe we should replace something that has crummy sufficiency that's used. Before we replace the one that has the forty ton rating on it.
Maybe we should do it, maybe we should do it this way, notify these townships supervisors, and see what they wanna do, you know, we couldn't, probably don't wanna do all of them in one year.
No, no.
Or you do a little more, it would hide, when we've gotten back home, or read one again, you know, and we eliminate a whole page, you know, eventually.
No, no. Well, and some, yeah, well, and part of it is talking to the townships to see if they're even used anymore.
Right.
Cause I mean, if, if they're good and they're usable, or it's a cross, site that needs to be crossed, well, then we should replace it, if not, why spend the money, but I, I was just thinking, you know. Maybe talk to the townships and see, cause maybe, yeah, maybe they have an inclination that, well, everyone doesn't, they travel at all anymore, or it's on per, or whatever.
But we could, uh, that's actually providing, you know, seeing what you're getting.
What's it to ask them?
Yeah, now, that, that rating, like, years and years ago, when we made this out, the, we rated that bridge as, as a one to, on the scale of one to five, is which one was gonna get done first? Which one we thought it was gonna use the most?
Don't count it.
That's about it.
So a five is?
High, it should've been done first, basically.
So, so a zero was, this thing probably never gets used again.
Probably never gets used again, yeah, exactly.
Okay, interesting.
So, I guess any questions on that page? And we can work on, uh, uh, some of these other ones for next year, or, yeah, next year. Get ahold of the townships and see what they think about them. That's there, okay?
Definitely easier work on ones that are kinda dry like this.
Yeah.
Great, absolutely. And water full of metal.
Okay, any further questions for Kevin on the road plan?
Well, this goes on the webpage, so we probably need a motion to accept this.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the five-year road plan estimate, please.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, fully discussion on accepting a five-year road plan. Seeing none, all in favor of both by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed same side? Motion carries, and the plan is adopted.
Okay, in going to these conventions, uh, one of the new techniques for repairing soft spots and groundwork is they're taking bags of cement and tilling into the areas. With these giant tillers, if, if you know what I mean, with the big drum mixers, so I was gonna look into what these things cost. And if we get the asphalt grinder type, we could grind down these high spots that show up on asphalt roads, and you can also cut those rumble strips where stop signs come up with this grinder. So I guess I was just looking to see if that was worth pursuing, or, what do you guys think about that? Should I keep looking into it, or? Like, a, a lot of, uh, other states and North Dakota are tilling the cement into these soft areas, and it works, I mean, if you think about it, it's, uh, it almost has to work, cause. The only problem again is if you don't go far enough, you know, you stop here and then the soft spot spreads a little farther, it always happens.
You got any cost, though?
Uh, probably the best one they make is around thirty thousand, that's forty-two, three and a half feet wide, and they have one that's, uh, thirty inches wide. So anywhere from twenty to thirty thousand.
And would fit on the skid steer?
Huh?
They would go on the skid steer, or?
Yep, exactly, yes.
You have that, right?
Yep, we have the skid steer.
Yeah, I would doubt it.
So, so this would be an option instead of, you know, if we get a soft spot, other than digging it up, put a fabric underneath, we could just come over the top, till it in, and, and I suppose you need a little bit of, a little bit of rain to activate it type of thing?
Right, the moisture in the ground, they say the moisture, it's down there already, is, you know, cause there's soft spots, there's flash, there's.
Interesting.
If you're doing a lot of it, they can do, you know, mixed designs for that, too.
Right, you'll call it test the soil and see, you know, what kind of soils you have, so you know how much, uh, cement, whatever.
Also other uses for it as well.
Yeah, exactly, so, using for other things.
How much does it take to die, like that much, or?
Oh, it'll go probably two feet, maybe here.
Two feet to die, but, really?
Yeah, well, it sounds like it's worth exploring, at least, so you see what kind of cost there is involved, and get some, some, I guess, what you want and put some bits together on it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get some prices and some more information on them, and then I'll write back, we can decide from there.
Okay.
And we're still working on, uh, putting some bridge specs together for that bridge on. Bridge on the Morris Township, so we can send that out to multiple vendors. And just get one bid. And. We have a. Construction and maintenance agreement for a bin lift overlay project that we're doing extra on one in Military Road from the state. So, we're looking for a signature that says we're gonna keep maintaining that after. Project is finished. So we just give a motion to sign that.
So moving.
Okay, we have a motion.
Target.
And we have a second to sign the agreement with the state, fully discussion. Seeing none on paper vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries.
Then we have the same exact maintenance, construction and maintenance agreement for the Sons of Jacob currie trail improvement that we got our SRF funds for. The only issue, and I don't think it's gonna be a problem, but there's one per, one. Has a sentence here that says after completion of construction. The LPA, which is us, will at its own cost and expense, maintain the project in a manner so as factory to the DOT. Or their authorized representatives, and will make ample provision each year for such maintenance. And they're asking for us to maintain this, it's the same thing saying that we agreed to maintain this project after we get our federal dollars for it. I don't know if we can work something out with the Sons of Jacob. Uh, letting them know that they'll, it'll be their responsibility, it's not a big, it's a three hundred, four hundred foot long road that's leads to the cemetery, it's not a big issue, but.
Well, what counts as maintenance under that? I mean, are they talking snow removal, are they talking just running a blade across it occasionally?
More gravel in the future, and keeping it accessible like a maintainer or whatever, yeah. But it'll probably include ten years of now gravel too, so.
Oh, before it's beat, that would've been.
Yeah, that'd be pretty long.
How much did the gravel cost on the?
The whole project, like fourteen seventy-one, four, one thousand four hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Well, the worst thing we have to do is ten years now, and go spend a couple of grand to splash gravel out of it, I would say. Just so you're aware, like, I mean.
Need a motion to approve that?
Yeah.
We need a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second to approve signing the agreement with the Sons of Jacob, fully discussion. Seeing none on paper vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries.
And the last thing I know is I did hire him to repair, replace a blade operator, it was Greg Schwab, who used to work for the city, so. Uh, he's good at public, getting along with the public, so I think he'll be a good fit for that maintenance. I don't know, I talked to his uh previous employers, and they said that as long as he wasn't in a managerial position, he'd probably be okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, we've talked about the handling property. Onto the homestead parade of the business, we have five of them apparently.
Would approve.
We're doing all of them at once?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve.
Safe, I got, no, anyway.
All five homesteades.
Yeah, we had too much, it was early in July.
Yeah, that was my only question, is that.
What's yours?
Is there supposed, the auditor is only supposed to sign them following approval? Unless we do the filling out for them, cause they can't do it themselves.
Right.
Okay, so everything is in line then? Cause I was looking at, that way they'd sign it for sure, okay?
I don't think the economy will last a dollar in a few years.
Well, no, it's, you know, as long as it checks out, it's the people that need, need the help, so.
Well, and there's, there's more. Like they're reaching, you know, like more outreach to elderly people.
Yeah, more people are learning.
And that has been for.
And that's good, so.
Yeah, so we're seeing a lot more like new, you know, that we haven't, that, you know, they probably should've done it ten, fifteen.
Yeah, they just found out that they're all not aware of it.
Yeah.
Maybe Stacy or like even Don or whatever.
Well, a lot of it's from the city.
They're going to ask a question and then they say, hey, we're all.
You know, Lisa's done well too with, you know, people coming into the office that, you know, know they're struggling and.
Yeah.
Make the right connections and get them in touch with the people and.
Otherwise they qualify and boom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice.
Okay, any further discussion on the first debate? Seeing none on paper, motion vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign. Motion carries. Okay, uh, discussion on training, travel for human resource. Uh, I'll take the lead on this, I guess, cause it's my portfolio, I was talking with Crystal Wood. Basically, um, what it comes down to is when we budgeted for the human resource position last year, all we did was budget for a salary. Uh, so we didn't budget anything for any kind of training or anything like that, and she, uh, there's a. The Association of Counties is putting on a human resources collaborative county official thing that she'd like to go to, and Kevin's actually going to be going with it as well, so they could write together and save costs there. So basically it would be two hundred dollars for the conference and then as well as just two nights of hotel rooms. But we wanna put it as a line item under her budget, and then we can amend it later, so that way we know how much to budget for next year, so we, we've got it delineated basically. But she wanted to make sure it was okay before she went registered and everything, so.
Like, great idea.
Yeah, and I, I said, I, I, we'll find a way to pay for it, because I mean, we want her to be able to do ongoing training, so.
I'm moving to approve the uh training and travel for the human resource.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
Second.
And we have a second, fully discussion. Seeing none on paper vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. We'll have Candy set up all that in the budget, so no problem. Fantastic, visitors and delegations.
I guess, we're working on a project for the city, um, which includes uh new sidewalks downtown. Uh, part of that work will include sidewalks in front of the courthouse this summer, so. There'll be some work right off, right out the door.
Have you guys finalized your plans? I think I saw an earlier draft, um, with the stamped concrete and fourth and fourth, is that still part of it?
Uh, it's changed a little bit since then, uh, with that making me back up to the steering committee.
Okay.
Can you attend one, please, one of the meetings?
I'm not, I'm, I'm not on that, well, I was there at the original one.
Oh.
Uh, but I'm not on the steering committee.
Okay.
But I did, I did see some of the initial drawings, and I thought, you know, the mockups looked incredible when you.
They did scale it back a little bit to keep the cost down, and, uh.
Of course they did.
When was this done last fall?
Much.
Oh, when was the last time downtown was done?
Uh, I think a long, ninety-two?
No, but the, these changes are gonna make it look incredible, I, I think.
It's eight, yeah, it's been twen- it's been twenty-five years with the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if you go downtown, it's some of the group stuff, trucks and stuff, they're starting to trouble, and.
Yeah, and that's.
It, it just needs a little maintenance, uh.
You'd have to have a bunch of cuts and a, and reinforcement would be pretty difficult, this thing must.
I, I think mostly they've done, uh, I think they're trying to do a little more. Creations, but I think they're just trying to do a little more maintenance, and, and, cause I haven't seen the plan.
That's what fourth and fourth's gonna look like? Originally it was gonna, yeah, they were gonna have this design.
This?
No, they were, but now they're down here. Yeah.
Those are different of all what they got now?
We're just gonna do it now.
Oh, well, so they got, they got these ball boats here, so they made it much bigger, they're gonna plant trees, and then they were thinking about, are they still doing the, the statues, the memorials on the.
They got those barbie plots?
Yeah. Each side?
Really?
Yeah, so they, there'd be twelve parkers, twelve paws.
Who are the statues gonna be? Are we gonna be in the running?
Yeah, actually, they're monuments, I guess.
Yeah, no.
They're, 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 they're all bald, just bald, bald with different poses.
There you go.
I was gonna say, how, how were we, how were we deciding it was all a monument, so we're gonna have like a contest or?
Governor got to approve all that? And it is wedding?
I think we should have a big contest, and make a big data.
Yeah.
Well, but I mean, they're gonna get eighty, twenty, so it's like if you're gonna make downtown look nice, you may as well do it now.
Sixty, forty?
Oh, it's sixty-four. That number gets forced into the general.
Sixty, forty? You think you gotta do forty of it?
No, it's eighty, twenty, they're gonna, they moved to special access, half of them local match. Last night's meeting, so it'll be eighty, ten city sales tax, ten property tax.
Well, the landlord's saying that is.
Yes, it will be so. So, which, so which sidewalks around?
Now you're starting to scare me. First, first I heard it was ninety, ten, then I heard it was eighty, twenty, I'm like, God, this deal's getting worse by the day.
Both sides of out here have the ball boats, um, right at the intersection, they're looking at replacing the, um, signals too.
And doing new lighting and?
Well, the lighting on six will stay the same, that's already been upgraded, LEDs.
And, and along, uh.
Lighting past here will.
Along, um, marketplace, they're, they're gonna do a, a fencing, right?
Um, that, that next, um. Basically, they're gonna try and go to a three lane up there, and for a truck to make it through there, they'd have to be in the through lane rather than the right turn lane, and they'd still have to go all the way over across it where people are trying to make a left turn. Also, it just, it doesn't fit, there's no way to do that.
Sure, so you'd have trucks driving over there?
Well, you'd have trucks trying to drive through cars that are trying to make a little left on the, on the truck, and so.
Jeff, did you have a question?
No, I, I think it was answered, it was the, what sidewalks run out of town enough?
So, are they gonna, uh-oh, sorry, I meant to catch on, so they tearing the whole sidewalk up, or are they just doing ticks work on it, or what's the plan?
Um, on fourth and fourth, that's all the sidewalks will be replaced, and there's some other blocks that they will be, um, I guess on the map here.
Yeah, I mean, just, just, I mean, it doesn't have to be answered, no, but just more of curiosity.
Well, I was thinking green on this map here. We'll have the sidewalks that are basically leave the blue and yellow over the match.
Okay.
And then eighty improvements at the intersection, so. They've got pretty good rambles up there, but the, they don't have the.
Green across the board.
That was what we're gonna do before, that's now, yeah.
So it's good for me, it makes it be easier to talk.
Right, and Mike's been real good about making sure that it's.
Yeah, well, we gotta key out.
Easy to make.
Keep the cost down, maintenance has to be easy. Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, who wants to weigh in? Who wants to start? Jeff raises his hand first, so.
Well, let's see, I talked to Sheriff Nelson last night, and, uh, you know, up the new and exciting, so he did get their new engine in that car that had the engine blow up on it, and he said that's working good. They do plan on keeping that around now with the newer engine in it, so. Um, new deputies on board and getting fully trained and acclimated to counting and kinda things, so that's going well. Uh, new cars should be in within the next six, eight weeks, I suppose, it may take a while. Did Donna get here and get all the. The equipment put in, so. We heard from Bill, Kerry's busy, um, planning and zoning, uh, did get an email from Joel about the timeline. Uh, he's gonna get a draft, comprehensive plan that after the changes that were discussed at the meeting, uh, with the feedback. Um, get the draft changes done, we'll reconvene the commission, planning commission meeting to address the zoning ordinance, and then once that's completed, then we'll bring it to the planning commission for.
What, they re-condue that?
We haven't picked a date yet.
Go away from Tuesdays.
Go away from Tuesdays.
Say that, get here on Tuesday.
Okay.
Won't work, don't want to.
Yeah, well, I had a couple requests that we wait till later this month, or the first part of March, uh, to accommodate some vacations and people that are gonna be out of, out of the area kinda thing, so. And it'll probably happen sometime first part of March, but. We'll keep people informed on that.
Okay.
I know people wanted to take a look at that comprehensive plan once the. The draft changes were completed and it done, the, from the feedback from the commission meeting that night, um. And when that's completed, we'll make it available either on online, on the website, or, you know, people that don't have that ability can maybe stop in and ask the auditor's office for a copy.
Okay, anything else? Uh, before I forget, I'll, I'll make mention that I just had a public thank you to Sheriff Nelson, cause he's helping me, uh. Get some, uh, temporary speed sign things put up around Edmore, so we can do some tracking of traffic through there, because there's been some complaints about traffic coming down Seventeen through town kinda fast, and so. We talked to highway control and kinda got a roll through.
They do, they roll through pretty quick.
Yeah, and, and I've, I've heard that, obviously, my, my in-laws live there, my father-in-law's got a shop right on the highway, so he watches people come in, and he's made mention as well as a few other people I've talked to up there, so. We're gonna hopefully get him up there and do some tracking and see what the problem is, and then maybe we can kinda target, now that we have a little more deputy help too.
Yeah.
Kinda target, maybe when we can sit there and catch a little people now a little bit, and to, you know, there's houses that back up right onto Seventeen and Edmore, and.
The one daycare backs up right onto Seventeen.
Yeah, so it can be a little dangerous, so we gotta, gotta keep that under control, but just a thank you to him for certainly getting it rolling, so.
Sure.
Well, Law Enforcement Center, that, you know, seems to be at the front all the time, and it's been going to the meetings. I think it's weekly or every two weeks, other than that, everything else is pretty quiet around the county. No news is good news.
Twitter, Jeff?
Twitter, Jeff.
Okay, good.
Yeah, social tourists that are here too much about it, this is going well, you know, last meeting, you know, like, only like there's all.
Yeah, I was in that, right?
So, uh.
It's all a blur.
Well, I guess, and Law Enforcement Center, we have our next inspection. From the DOC on the February week of the twelfth, we expect them, they're supposed to notify us for when they're coming. And, um. I should be able to get some type of progress report on all we're doing. There's numerous things that we're working on in the plant itself, the building, trying to get it in shape. It's an ongoing, it will be ongoing. One of the problems we're having out there with the repairs of the building and the financing, we're using a lot of inmate help. And the bylaws and Law Enforcement Center state that. Repair and upkeep of the building and responsibility of Ramsey County and the city of Dublin on a fifty-fifty basis. And while we didn't put it into the budget, I'm not asking for money right now, but I'd like to forewarn you in the future, you might have to come in and. After's part of these upkeeps that the Law Enforcement Center for paying for right now. And in the bylaws, it says that upkeep of the building, responsibility of Ramsey County and the city of Dublin. On a fifty-fifty basis, like I said. We might need to step in and take care of part of it this year, and then try to implement part of it into the budget next year. Uh, we should've probably done that. A year back, but we didn't. That's something to be forewarned with. I had conversations with. Mister Redman, he's second command down there at DOC, right under the Amber, and, uh, like, he's gonna be here on the twelfth, so. And up until now, what's been pop word and here's been coming, it's been inspected, so. But they're both coming that week, they told me, so. And we'll see how things are going to end, finding a little better handle on where we're at, what more needs to be done. And, um. There are policies in place, the pre-icata. A bunch of things, I'm not sure. I really don't have a lot of hope to put tranquil prisoners back in there anytime soon, really. So. He had me on the phone forty minutes here two weeks ago Friday. So. It was quite a lengthy conversation. But when it's ruined. And that's what you gotta ask, we're up here. And, uh.
Anyway, we, we did change some of our staff.
Yeah. Dan Kraft has been moved into the captain position now. In place of Jerry, didn't. In place of Jerry, been, he'd been brought down as lieutenant, that he is the pastor, you know, so. Dan was there from over at, across the street from the entry. He's the previous captain out there. And, uh. There's things that we hope to improve with him and what you had Jerry there, so.
Who's running ranch with him?
Uh, Linda, what's her last name? On a temporary basis, she added when, uh, from a while back here, what, three years, a couple years ago.
So we got an intro, but then we're gonna add to it.
See where we go with that, but. Dan's still available to help if anything needs to be done.
Well, and Rob Reddick, Rob Reddick mentioned previously, so you can make it up for an intro basis, just like I told.
We're surely not looking to add staff. You know, we're not looking to do that. We need to keep our COs onboard and, um. There was one fired the other day because they wouldn't follow, uh, policies and guidelines that needed to be followed, so. Uh, he refused to do it, so he would have just missed. So. Any questions about it? Probably missed something, but I'm firing at me, I know it. Hit the news media last night, I don't get channel eight, so. But if there's any questions anybody has that you've got to try to answer. I'll have another weekly meeting at ten o'clock today, and I've been trying to get to them every week. And need for the staff, and, um. We've been having those since September, when closure orders came out, so.
Well, I think it's important to note that improvements are being made, and that it's not gonna close anytime soon. So whatever people saw in the news last night is completely false.
Yeah.
You know, their, the reporting wasn't, the, the, the lead on that story was, I think, completely off basis. You know, um, locking our doors versus locking up prisoners, I think, uh. And, you know, I'll say it to the camera, WDAS needs to be put on notice that, that that is not the case. You know, and our community needs to be assured that, that jail is gonna continue to operate and it's, and making improvements on a regular basis. You know, uh, I, I think that the recording that was done was haphazardly, um, glorified to garner headlines. And, you know, to be quite frankly, it, it kind of put me off a little bit. Um, and I think we, we all feel that way, because we are seeing strides that are made there, you know, these problems didn't occur overnight, and they won't fix themselves overnight, so. Uh, I think that's something that, you know, the community needs to understand, but more importantly, I think our news media outlets need to understand it as well. So, um, you know, I think great strides have been made, and they continue to be made on a regular basis, so. That's what I have to say.
Along those lines, I, you know, I watched it last night. Is there anything that we can do? From a state's attorney point of view, that, you know, you should have your stories proper before they go on TV? I mean, there, there was, there was no actual interviews. I know they sat in front of the Law Enforcement Center at five o'clock last night.
Yeah, I saw it when I left.
Talked to nobody, and then just.
I'll look, I walked in this morning at my house and caught just the tail end of something, so it's on my list to look at.
Well, they did. Yeah, they did interview Rob Johnson, whether that was from last night or from a previous interview they had done with him.
But, you know, there too, it was, it was cut, you know, Rob didn't get finished explaining, it got cut.
Well, and, and they all, I mean, that seems to be the business of some news media outlets lately, where they get that two-second something like, um, where they have.
And, and we have talked to them, but from the LAC point of view, we have talked to them before, we have called in their, their higher-ups and, and had interviewed them, and discussed, you know.
Right.
I mean, I think this, from a legal perspective, I don't know that there's a whole lot that you can do, though Kerry would do that better than me. I, I would suggest that if it's a real concern, that you'd want to have the LAC write an editorial in the Grand Forks Herald.
Editorial, then maybe some just in by the public, you know.
By, by, favored by, uh, ink by the barrelful, so, uh, I was kind of losing that one.
But at least we could, you know, maybe set the record straight now.
I mean, you gotta do what you can do, right?
Well, I did know too, that, um, Rob Johnson has tried several times to kind of educate a little bit about social media, uh, escapes versus abstinence versus lock fees, and kind of how that all happens. And I think it's just consistently trying to get our message out and counteract a little bit what's maybe just being put out there for purposes of a certain like.
Yeah, we don't, we don't mind being.
Whether or not there's some legal option.
There's nothing wrong with having reporting, but it has to be fair.
We like to have fair and accurate reporting.
Yeah, accurate reporting is all we're asking for. I mean, if, if we're doing a poor job, it should be reported on. If we're doing something, uh, and there's improvements being made, it needs to be reported on the same way as well.
It needs to be inaccurate, correct.
I think a lot.
I guess I haven't seen this.
Hear safe, hear safe, whether you love it, hear safe, that'd be my guess. No, I think Law Enforcement Center's come along fine. Through this whole process of the closure order, or we've had to, I've had to probably implement things at times, or try to convince them that this is the building we have, this building is paid for, we need to take care of this building. And I told that to the committee out there numerous times. And, uh, we need to correct this situation we're in here and do it right. There's one thing that Mr. Redman brought up to me two and a half weeks ago now. They call it closure orders, closure orders for the jail, and that's what the COs are supposed to follow, the sergeants, the dads, captains are supposed to follow on a daily basis. And, uh, he kind of implemented to me, or trying to imply to me, I should say, that this hasn't been getting followed. And I said, well, he kind of explained to me what they were all about, I said, okay. I said, when were they put in place? He said, Devil's Lake has never had them. Never used them. And I asked Mr. Redman, I says, how do you run a jail without using closure, closure orders?
Post-orders.
Post-orders, post-orders, that's what I have, post-orders, yeah, excuse me. That's what they are. And he says, you don't. I said, how many other jails in North Dakota don't use them? None. So that was part of the forty minutes I was on the phone with him. And these post-orders are in place now, and they are being used, and that's one of the reasons one of the, uh, COs was fired. They weren't followed, didn't think they needed to.
It had never been done before.
The Lake Region Law Enforcement Center has never used post-orders.
Yeah, but now they are.
They are.
Yep. So, and in your conversations with Burge, Redman, the other gentleman.
I never talked to Burge, but Redman was right below her.
And the other gentleman's name was?
Whirlinger?
Whirlinger. And they've never said to you that our intention from the state is to have this facility closed?
No.
Yeah, so. I know. They, they wanna work with us, and that's the, the indication that I've gotten from everybody that I've talked to as well, that they wanna work with the Lake Region Law Enforcement Center to help improve it, not to close it down.
Actually, their words were just the opposite.
Right, exactly.
The day they walked in, they said, we weren't, they weren't here to close us, they were here to help us.
Yep. And, and I think that's what we receive from them, you know, sometimes it's a little tough love, but.
That's, that's good, though.
It is good, you know, it makes us a good facility.
We gotta get our rest in the room, we gotta do things right, but I mean, there's no advantage to the state closing the facility if we're making improvements.
Exactly.
I mean, that doesn't make any sense, as long as we're doing the work necessary to get where we need to go, I mean, and unfortunately, it's gonna probably take longer than all of us wanted to, but there's a lot of things that needed to be worked on.
And I don't, after understanding how they use post-orders and what they do in the jail, I have no clue how you could run a jail and I'll use them. I had to have, how are you accountable from one shift to the next, on what your head count is? One of the things on post-orders, first thing you do is go count, how many are here, how many are you responsible for? When you leave that shift, you count, make sure they're all there, logical. They've never used them. I mean, it's just mind-boggling to me. And I get no argument about the staff out there that they've never used them. I get no argument. They've never been in place. And I, what? And I learned quite a bit there, and I told you, Robert, it's a post order. How do you close your shift off, I guess, so. But that's, I would think we've got to work on it, the jail and the committee's working on it. Like I said, I don't see us getting federal prisoners anytime soon. Because there's things that need to be worked on, and Mr. Redman said, I'm the one that has to sign off on that, and that's what he told me, so. And until we're ready, I'll take care of the needs of the counties and the city and provide the service for them. Any other questions? Thanks for your comments, you know, right on. But evidently, the way you're talking, it's throwing a lot of hearsay, you know.
Well, I don't know what they were basing it on, other than something that had happened months ago, you know, um, and whether or not they're doing a follow-up, that's fine, but wait till, you know, obviously, I think we have a, an inspection sometime next week.
Well, we did it.
Do it next week following that, and let's see what the, that inspection says. You know, but to come out and say that, you know, could be closing and locking their doors instead of locking their, of prisoners, you know, that just strikes fear in the community. Yeah, you know, and, and I think it's really some poor reporting on their part, so.
But they've got a pretty good record of, uh, rejecting fear.
Yeah. Yep. So.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, Lucas?
I'll be short, there's a home rule meeting this Friday at one thirty. Oh, welcome to that.
That is short.
Here?
Right here?
Right here.
I like it.
One thirty.
One thirty. Yeah. And I guess then for myself, uh, county housing authority, nothing too exciting, will, uh, be meeting later in the month, last month was pretty straightforward. Uh, former Devil's Lake, we had our, uh. I don't know what you call it, the final meeting with Paul Lucy, where he gave us kind of recommendations and reviews of processes and organizationally speaking, and, uh, you know. How we should be structured and things like that, at least in his viewpoint. Uh, we didn't take any action on it, other than, you know, it was an hour and a half, plus just listening to recommendations and ideas and, and, and his, uh. You know, thoughts on the, on the organization. Uh, we haven't followed, we're scheduled a follow-up meeting, but, uh. We'll be scheduling a follow-up meeting at some point in the near future to really start diving into those things and, and making some determinations on how the organization's gonna run going forward. You know, part of that will be bringing on the executive director, so I don't know exactly how the timeline's gonna work yet, I guess we haven't totally discussed it, but we'll be, I'm sure we'll have a meeting, like, meeting pretty soon again, I don't know when the executive will be.
You made no decisions on the executive director, on our hire or nothing?
We, no, we, we don't have an interview process or anything set up, with the closing date was just on the thirty-first, and I actually haven't had a chance to talk with Terry Johnston or, or Renard about it, to see how many people we were up to, and. That will be the next thing, we'll, yeah, we'll come up with a meeting date, we'll have to determine how we're gonna go through the process, I would assume, well, we'll go through, uh. Applications and probably determine, you know, top power for many, or depending on how many applications we have, I suppose.
Want to all say about, on what to look for in an executive director, then, or what, does he have any ideas?
His recommendation was, in the past, and I, I agree with him not wholeheartedly, but very much so, that. We've had the executive director, you know, we're, we're a small staff organization, you got basically one person doing everything, and we need to set specific goals. These are the things we want to accomplish, and not go up and start chasing after stuff. You know, and, and I think that, uh, that had nothing to do with Rachel's fault to a point, the board has to tell her, this is what we want you to do, or whoever is running the organization, saying, this is, these are our goals, this is what we want you to do, let's hit it. But sometimes what it comes down to is needs are happening in the community, and you go, well, we can help fill that need. Well, unfortunately, when you try to fill that need, and that need, and that need, all of a sudden, your main goal turns into you're spending more time doing other stuff than really focusing on that one thing. So hi- his, uh, evaluation was, we're, we're gonna have, more than likely, we're gonna have to add, uh, or, or not even necessarily add, but shuffle how we're doing things on program administration. So maybe take some of that paperwork off the executive director's desk, whether you staff it through the city, or you do a, a part-time person, or, you know, an administrative assistant essentially. To take some of that paperwork time off and have that former Devil's Lake director be out in the public more, really making contacts and doing more of that work on your main goals, other than sitting at the desk doing all the paperwork on all these programs that we're trying to administer, because your, your public face is spending. More time at a desk doing paperwork than actually out there doing what they should be doing, and selling the city of Devil's Lake and the county of Rattler. So that was one of his recommendations, so we, you know, basically somebody that's gonna be basically a salesperson for the community is, is one of the things to look at. Yeah, but again, some of that'll come down to, you know, for talking to other staff, talking financing, you know, funding, comfort level with where everybody's at in terms of. How we're going to do those things, and we honestly haven't had that discussion up to this point, so. It's gonna be a process of, you know, it's gonna take a few meetings to really hash out where we're gonna go, I think. He didn't make any recommendations really to, uh, governance structure, he thought, you know, like, we're a five oh one C six or something, he said, all that stuff is fine. You know, he recommended that we keep our offices at the city, 'cause he thinks that that works okay, uh, you know, save some money on rent and the book, outside staffing, bookkeeping, and everything he's comfortable with. But he, he just felt more just a, we have to really delineate our vision basically, and say, this is what we're gonna shoot for. And, you know, you know, you sat through the process too, I mean, at the end of the process, there were probably, he asked us, you know, basically ten things, what do you think's the most important, well, all ten of them were important. You know, so that's kind of how you get out the message to a point, 'cause it's like, well, God, that needs to be filled in, well, there's nobody doing it, well, we'll spend a little time doing that, and all of a sudden, you're doing seven things when you should be doing one, you know, so. Part of that's the board keeping the executive director on task.
Rachel needed help.
Yeah, she, she was, she was spread thin, trying to do seven different things instead of really focusing on that one or two things that we really want to accomplish.
Or to be the leader, or to be the leader, not to be the.
Yeah, and, and part of that, like I said, that's the board's fault, we have to say, here, this is what, this is what we want you to do, and we need to help, help say, hey, we're gonna keep that up and play it somehow, you know, so. Uh, it'll be an interesting discussion going forward, to say the least. Making mention of Home Rule, we had the meeting at one thirty on Friday, um, we had those two public meetings, uh, at, uh, City Plaza, and I think they went well, we had a lot of really good input. Commissioner Brown was there, first meeting, we had a lot of really good input, ideas I hadn't thought of, you know, in terms of structuring things in the Home Rule. I think we set a really good base for knowledge of the community, for the people that attended, so they had an idea of what Home Rule could do, what it couldn't do, the type of things. So I think overall, we, uh, as a committee accomplished our goal in getting some feedback and, and, uh, doing a little bit of education. So I think that went really well. And lastly, oh, Recovery, uh, they mentioned, oh, that's a technical name now, but I went to that meeting last, well, it's come a week, so. Uh, I think they need to meet again this Thursday, but they, they're working on peer-to-peer stuff as well as housing, and, uh, the peer-to-peer things, it looks really promising. We have six, I think it was six individuals from this, uh, area that are going to peer-to-peer counseling training with the state. So that we can do, uh, when we come out of re-entry and things like that, we can do peer-to-peer counseling to keep people, you know, give them support, basically.
I think some of that's, some of that's been done.
Yeah.
Talking, talking to Nell's here, you're, you're good now.
Yeah, they've been out there, but, yeah, we had six, and I think one of the problems, and we discussed it the last meeting, is. Uh, you know, the peer-to-peer training, it's, it's people that have gone through this. So, you're asking, uh, you know, and a lot of them, you know, they're working, you know, they work the jobs. So you're basically asking people that are working jobs and, and have, you know, straightened their legs out, and are doing a really good job to leave their, you know, a lot of them can't leave their job for three days to go to train in Bismarck. Uh, so it makes it kinda difficult. Um, but one of the things that we're gonna hopefully be able to accomplish, or they're hoping to accomplish, is, if we can, once you become trained, then you can become a trainer. You go to another training, you can become a trainer, and then maybe we can start training people in Devil's Lake then, so that way we can, you know, 'cause we don't wanna, you know, there's gonna be a certain amount of burnout with this peer-to-peer counseling stuff, so you're gonna have to expand the pool, but six is a good start. And, uh, if there might be some way, and we talked about, maybe through social services or something, I could visit with Ron about it, maybe if we can help, not necessarily pay for the training, but, you know, people have to lay money to get down there and things like that, maybe we could help out with some short-term funding to get people to the trainings and stuff, but. It's something to visit about at least, uh, 'cause I, you know, there's now a lot of, there hasn't been a lot of investment locally, capital, you know, money-wise up to this point, a lot of time through the committee, but I think it's really gonna be valuable when it's done, but we have to really stay on, you know, and I think they're doing a fantastic job so far, so. I've just never got to learn where they were at, I, I've been, I'm impressed, I think, uh, the comments I heard from the committee is, were, as a community, are really stepping up, and, uh, we're, not, you know, we're ahead of the other communities that were kinda targeted with this, uh, 'cause we really have a core group that's focused, who has an idea of what they wanna accomplish, and things like that, so. I think we're on the, on the right path there. Other than that, I think, anything else? I think that's it. Any other, uh, comments?
No, have you moved to adjourn?
Second.
We have motion to second to adjourn.
We are adjourned.